Welcome everybody to the monthly meeting in Pikeville Independent School Board Meeting. As always, we'll open with a word of prayer and we'll have it with our Board Member Greg Taggitt. Please Greg.
Let's pray. Most precious and heavenly Father, we just come to you to thank you for this time that we can be here, dear Father, and just we thank you for our staff, our teachers, our children, dear Father. We just pray that you be with them and the business we conduct tonight, dear Father. We just pray it just be to glorify your name and that we would do what we're here for, dear Father, to advance and be with our children and make the right decisions for them. And we pray all this in your son's most precious and heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Taggitt. Okay, we'll begin our agenda with the student achievement. Mr. Green?
Yes, so under student achievement, there's an attachment there of a letter received from Dr. Holliday dated November the fifteenth. For those in the audience, "Dear Superintendent Green, congratulations to Pikeville Independent School District for being in the top ten highest college and career readiness rates in Kentucky. I applaud your work and your response to the passage of Senate Bill One and its call for schools and districts to improve the college and career readiness for their students by fifty percent by the 2014-15 school year. Keep up the great work in Pikeville Independent Schools. Sincerely, Terry Holliday, Ph.D." Nice letter of congratulations by the Commissioner concerning the college and career readiness rates. And of course, we want to celebrate that with the school district and certainly during this Thanksgiving time, we've got a lot to be thankful for and of course, that's one of them. And Mr. Belcher will be sharing some other things here shortly. There's two letters on student and staff recognition for student achievement that are listed as attachments under miscellaneous and you have copies of those. The first being a letter from Representative Leslie Combs. "Please accept my congratulations on being appointed to serve as a council member of the School Curriculum Assessment Accountability Council. This is not only a personal honor but also a positive reflection on Pikeville Independent School System. I applaud you for your willingness to serve, to set academic standards, access learning, and hold schools accountable for learning and assist schools in improving their performance throughout Kentucky. To be commended for your commitment to the betterment of the schools of Pike County and the Commonwealth. Best wishes for success in this endeavor." If it can be further assistance, please do not hesitate to contact me. Certainly want to thank Representative Combs for that letter. And then the last letter is a letter there by the Commissioner regarding LSAC employment.
Yeah, Mr. Green, could you fill us in a little bit more on that LSAC appointment and what that means? And congratulations to you for being appointed again for a second term.
Yes, the Board wants to congratulate you too.
Well, thank you. It's eleven superintendents of one hundred and seventy-four are appointed by the state legislature concerning being a part of the local superintendent advisory council. This council reviews of superintendent's reviews all regulations prior to the state Board of Education approving these. So just thankful that-
Very high on it.
-we have a district voice on this. Thank you.
Very high on it. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, is that all the student staff recognition? We'll move down to the principals report, elementary principals report. Mr. Jones?
You have in front of you a, I handed you a piece of paper that says fiscal activity report. This is the required business of the night. This time every year, we're required to present to you this report. Shows our amount of fiscal activity in our building and how this information is gathered. All of our teachers are given a spreadsheet beginning of the year that they interview parents during open house times and also the older children in grades four, five, and six. They ask them when they collect any outside activity, extracurricular activity, things other than the sports we offer in school, the things we offer in school like karate and things like that. But to make a long story short, you know, this is a report of the fiscal activity in our building. So if you'll notice, this is a little confusing. This is the only way it can be reported because of the, our scheduling. If you'll look, the first section is our primary. That's grades preschool through third grade. Every student at Pikeville Elementary School has a PE class one day a week. You know, it's a forty-five minute class. Every student at Pikeville Elementary School also has a recess time during the day. Of course, that recess changes from outside activities to also, you know, to the inside activities depending upon the weather. And also, they've documented their lesson plans and follow through a ten-minute per day in-class activity. That was started years ago and it's still going strong. So just to go down and explain to you this report, every primary student has PE class for forty-five minutes per week average during the year. They have seventy-five minutes of recess a week and a ten minutes, I'm sorry, fifty minutes of in-class activity per week. Everything from they do calisthenics, dance, they walk around the hallways. Some are older students, when it's warmer, they go outside and walk around. But to make a long story short, our primary averages thirty-four, each student in our primary classes averages thirty-four minutes a week of fiscal activity in our school. And the bold item there is the results of the survey. We pass that survey out, our teachers tabulate every activity the students are involved in. At Pikeville Elementary School, fifty-three percent of our students in our primary, that's grades K through preschool through third grade, are involved in some type of extracurricular activity, dance, whether it be U-Pike School of Dance or karate or any type of sport at the Y. If that makes sense to you, it gets a little confusing with the next group because our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classes does not have PE once a week. They have it on a rotating schedule. You know, they go to a class for a while, then go to another class for a while. It's about a week at a time. But I did the math last year, we added it up. In grades four, five, and six, our students are getting forty-five minutes per day of PE for about twelve weeks of the school year. Give or take a few days depending upon weather and schedule changes. So they average two hundred twenty-five minutes a week for twelve weeks. And of course, the recess stays the same, fifteen minutes a day, which is seventy-five minutes a week. And also their wellness time, which is seventy-five minutes a week. So the total minutes per week in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade is three hundred and seventy-five minutes for a twelve-week period and then a hundred and fifty for the other twenty-four weeks that they don't have that PE class. I hope that makes sense to you. On average, for twelve weeks of the school year, our students are getting seventy-five minutes and then the other twenty-four weeks, thirty minutes. If that doesn't make sense, I'll try to explain any questions about that. And then in fourth grade, you'll see seventy-one percent of our students are participating in some extracurricular activity. In fifth grade, sixty-three percent, and in sixth grade, seventy-two percent. And those numbers were discounted and I took them and tabulated them and calculated that percentage. Is there any questions about that report? I know it's confusing, but it's hard, it's hard to-
I'm assuming we meet state guidelines.
Oh, yes, we do. Absolutely. And I've said this before, when we say we're doing in-class activity, we can document that we're doing in-class activities. It's in their lesson plans and you can go around and see them doing the dance tapes and they're doing calisthenics in their classrooms, walking around the hallways. So yes, we exceed state expectations on that.
And we're fortunate and blessed too because not only is this going on with, in the fiscal activity side, but also at what you would call those other special classes, we're really fortunate to have full-time librarian, full-time health and PE teacher along with, these students are also getting technology, Spanish, and art. And we have staff members for each of those. So students are really fortunate, not only just get this and not only getting this from a separate teacher than the daily classroom teacher or changing the classes. So that's something we need to be thankful for too.
Spanish is a special class?
Yes.
Who teaches that?
Mr. Slom.
Josh Slom.
We're one of the few school districts that I'm aware of east of I-75 that has a fully certified Spanish teacher at the elementary level. And several schools will have that at the high school level, but-
And they start that in what?
Start that, Spanish at the kindergarten.
In kindergarten. And go all the way through?
Yeah.
Well, yes.
That's great.
There's a combination of technology class with that as well, but yes.
And one thing I want to mention, our sixth graders probably end up with more fiscal activity time because they do the president's fiscal fitness test. And Mr. Howard, Mr. Israel Howard spends some extra time with them towards the end of the year preparing them to take their final physical fitness test. So their time is a little bit more on average. Any questions about that report?
You may want to touch on your sign-ups.
I do, I have some, I have some other information here.
Does this include like the Little League football?
Yes, yes. Yeah, if they listed they play football or basketball, that's in that as well.
Okay.
I have several things to mention real quick. First of all, I want to thank the Board. I thank Mr. Green for providing our students with a reward lunch, steak, and hot dogs and at our school. Our students were very appreciative, they really enjoyed the meal, and it was, it was a blessing for our teachers as well. We truly appreciate that on behalf of everybody at our elementary school.
I'd like to say thank you. We gotta, if it could have been a standing ovation, we gotta clap from all the students. Appreciate it, what they got. Wonder if they could get it next week too.
Yeah, you know, I'm for that too. I'll be honest with you. And also Mr. Green, you know, he came over and helped serve the meals. So I really appreciate Mr. Green for coming over and doing that as well.
Again, this time of year, we'd be thankful for a lot of things and for those unaware, it was just a recognition celebration for the assessment results and achievement results. There was no negative comments. I didn't hear anything negative about it, it was all positive. And just a way of saying thank you and recognizing the students with a ribeye steak dinner for the students and the staff. And again, we're just fortunate and thankful to be able to do that. And I think that they really enjoyed it.
We really appreciate that. Thank each and every one of you very much. Couple of quick things I want to mention. Online on our school website, you may have it mentioned to you out in the public, we are in the process now of, we had from the time our test scores were released, we have ninety days to complete a C-SIP, a Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. And it's going to be entered in to the State Department a little different way this year. So we're in the process of working the kinks out of that right now. But we have ninety days to get that report prepared and the clock is ticking. But we have put out a survey and we notified our parents online on our school website. There's a link that parents can click on and take a survey, asking them questions. I think it's about a twenty-question survey about our school and they're asked to provide their answers. And we'll use that input as well as a teacher survey and every student in our school will take a survey. And all of that will be compiled as well as our data and everything put into our new school improvement plan coming out pretty soon. That's just a few days away, that deadline. I'm proud of our school, I'm proud of our community. We, just today, our Resource Center in collaboration with several agencies and churches in the area, we provided fifty families with large, and I mean large, boxes, several boxes of Thanksgiving dinner items. That was passed out today and I think tomorrow as well. Fifty large portions was passed out today. So congratulations and thank you to Ms. Dawn, to Resource Center, and also our community for stepping up in a big way. As I mentioned last month, we, last November, last school year, I'm sorry, October first, our minority population at Pikeville Elementary School exceeded eight percent. And we were required to have on our site-based council now, a minority parent member and a minority staff member. So we now have an eleven-member site-based council at Pikeville Elementary School and we have two new members. I'd like to welcome Mr. Nate Green, who is a parent, he's now serving on our site-based council, and also Ms. Merrill Silvers is a member of the Pikeville Elementary Site-Based Council. So congratulations to those two folks. We have just completed the first round of our required K-three kindergarten through third grade program review. We are required to do that this year. If you remember last year, we talked to you about the Arts and Humanities of Practical Living and the Writing Program reviews. We are doing a K-three program review this year. The first round is now completed. We have, we will go through two more updates throughout the school year. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Rowe. Mr. Rowe is a member of the Board of Directors of the Kentucky Association of School Administrators. That's a huge honor. A congratulations to Mr. Rowe for that. Also, one other item, you mentioned sports. The deadline for sign-ups for our Little League basketball teams is next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. Last year, we had seventeen teams of girls and boys in grades two through six. We are anticipating probably more than that this year based on the early sign-ups. So that will be completed next week. Mr. Howard will put together the teams and the coaches and we'll get started playing ASAP. We're going to extend the season this year, make it a little longer season, run it through March, all the way through March. I think the facilities will become a little more open for us to finish the season during that time. So we're gonna have a good, long season and that sign-up, you know, again, ends next week. That's all I have. Any questions?
You had a lot of positive comments about the veterans program. You may want to touch on that.
Yeah, we, we had our annual veterans program at the PHS Alumni Auditorium. We had several veterans come. It's always been a huge turnout. They were also very complimentary of the proceedings and the way things went. We always want our kids to remember the sacrifices made. We had, you know, a great speaker, Mr. Charles Copley spoke to our student body. We had several visitors and, you know, program went really well. It, you know, every year, I always worry that it's not going to come off the way it does because there's so many different people involved. But it, you know, it came off without a hitch. So we're thrilled for that. Any questions?
Thanksgiving dinner, how many people do you think we had for the two days?
Ms. Smith, do you remember how many we had?
We actually fed a hundred and thirty-seven adults on Wednesday. Thursday, they settled down a little bit. I'm not sure I was out in town on the train, so I'm a bit proud.
Yeah, yeah, between two hundred and seventy-five and probably three hundred additional meals this year. The crowd was down just a little bit from the past, but it went really smooth and we appreciate all of our visitors for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the general, we'll move down to the principals report from the high school. Mr. Rowe?
First of all, I'd like to start off just congratulating our district once again on our ACT scores, fourth in the state. Just beyond proud is the best way to say it. We've got a lot of friends who are administrators throughout the state and they often call or have called asking, "How do we get scores as high as we have?" And I've been thinking really hard about it. I really think it starts here with Mr. Green and the Board of Education. I want to thank you all. Our class sizes are as small as any district I've ever been a part of or have talked to anybody about. I think that's the bottom place where things like this start. We have one-on-one connections with our kids and, you know, that shows through our ACT. But beyond that, we want to thank our community members, our parents, teachers, students, staff, the elementary staff. Getting scores as high as we have is not something that's just done at the high school. It's something our entire community has embraced. And we want to say kudos to our community because we want to be number one, but we're happy with number four, but we're still working hard to get to number one. So we want to start off by saying thank you to all those. Saying the same thing that Mr. Jones said, I want to say kudos to Mr. Green and the Board for the steak dinner. Actually, I was out of town for the Board of Directors meeting for the KS-SSP and, but I did come back, I had a couple of students who pulled me to the side. And I must bring these tears to my eyes when I say it, but thanking Mr. Green and the Board because they've never had a steak dinner.
Never had a steak before.
And that is, I mean, it chokes you up, but it shows you that we have students across many different economic criteria in our district and they're very thankful for what they got. So once again, thank you all for that and hopefully you can come back next year and we'll be number one in the state and maybe get more in the state. I want to thank Mr. Belcher, our new instructional supervisor. He has been great with his expertise and data desegregation. Our new testing system has more data than we've probably ever seen in our entire life. Mr. Belcher's been very good coming over to our faculty and helping us break that down. And we're having many good conversations and we were talking today. He'll be back over and we'll have more conversations. Even though our scores are in the top five percent of the state of Kentucky, our goal is to get better. So we're breaking that down to the level of why are we not the number one in the state? And we're gonna look at that data and make adjustments for that. I want to say kudos to Phil Hefington and our boys soccer team, the first ever regional champions in soccer. Very excited about that. They made it to the Elite Eight in Lexington. Just a proud moment. Soccer's really growing in eastern Kentucky. We got a chance to go downstate and compete with, I'd call the big boys from the Louisville-Lexington northern Kentucky area. We're excited and hopefully we can continue to grow in boys soccer. All-state chorus, Abigail Stanley and Jared Alton, you know, two students who are choosing all-state, kudos to both of them. Such a great honor. Kudos to Blair Pack, all-state volleyball, Class A. Kudos to Michaela Bush, all-state girl soccer. So there's a lot of extracurricular activity awards we're getting. It shows our students are not just strong academically, they're strong in other areas too. So we kind of have the same motto as the Kentucky High School Athletics Association when we say the academics and athletics go hand in hand and it is showing at Pikeville High School. I want to do a special kudos to Ms. Ann Cardy, our board member. I had a chance to sit in on one of her presentations, as Mr. Green did, on the history of Pikeville. It's something I'm going to invite her to come in and do to our show, to our faculty. It's a great video showing the history of Pikeville in the year 2015 when we're celebrating our centennial anniversary, a hundred years of the school system. It's quite amazing where Pikeville's at and you can see why Pikeville is as good as it is because it started out good. So Ms. Cardy, thank you for that. It's an honor to be a part of that class.
Been fun.
Yeah, it's been, been real fun. Again, we're celebrating our test scores, but I'll keep saying we're going to try to get better and better with that. So our faculty, we like to celebrate, but I know I'm competitive, so we're gonna go back and we're gonna break it down and we're gonna try to become number one. I want to say kudos to Mr. Jones here. He is a Board of Director member for KMSA. He's done a great job with that and he's representing us well. So if Mr. Jones, please keep that work up. At this time, if you have any questions for me, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Garrus and he's gonna give our fiscal activity report for the high school.
The only thing you may want to touch on is I know Mr. Belcher was singing your praises about leading a SACS review visit in a neighboring district. So that also benefits us, for you guys.
Yes, I got a chance to be a team lead for the external review team for Letcher Central High School. Mr. Belcher, you've got to be part of that. We go out and it's to do the SACS accreditation process, something we've been through two years ago at our high school. Anytime we can step outside of our district, review another school and learn some of the things they're doing, and like I tell them schools, we're not borrowing, we're stealing it, we're taking it back, we're not gonna give it back. Anytime we can find something good that goes on another school district, we're gonna bring it back. And I'm sure, I'm speaking for Mr. Belcher and myself, when I say there were great things going on at Letcher Central and there's some great ideas we'll bring back and make us a stronger school because of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrus?
Good evening. I'd like to say thank you all to you always well for the steak dinner. It was very generous and, you know, it was very tearful that day when students do tell you that that's the first time they had steak and that, you know, they were very grateful for it. And Ms. Cardy and Ms. Combs was there and I think they also had tears in their eyes that day as well. I was at a Pike County Bowl meeting and came in late, but there was extra steak, so I did get to have it. And speaking of the Pike County Bowl, that is all set for next year as well. And one thing that has been done with that, the committee asked that we try to go to three sites next year. And I don't want to elaborate on it a whole lot, but there will be two sites on Friday night, one will be at Belfry and Shelby Valley, and then on Saturday night, it will be at our school. And what has taken place, Belfry and Pike Central will have two outside opponents playing at Belfry on Friday night, at Shelby Valley on Friday night, it'll be Shelby Valley and Phelps, they have two outside opponents. And on Saturday night, at Pikeville, we will have us and Esteriz will have two outside opponents, but we'll be playing the same opponents both years just because they didn't want to compete against the team we wanted to and we didn't want to compete against the team that they wanted to. So I got it worked out and next week, we're having a Pike County Bowl meeting and it will be announced then. So I don't want to kind of let the cat out of the bag as far as that goes on who will be participating on those evenings. At the high school, our physical education, PE one and PE two, and it's available for boys and girls at seven, ten, eleven, and twelve. They get a minimum of two hundred and twenty-five minutes per week for the year. Our ninth grade is on the semester rotation with health and PE. So he has a couple of classes that he has health and he's got some classes that Mr. McNamee has that are in PE. And then they rotate those students during the year so that that way they're getting their semester of health in and their semester of PE as their requirement. One thing I would like to say is that we do have sixty-three percent of our students participating in extracurricular activities, which is astronomical. And, you know, we're only thirty-seven percent away from having one-hundred percent participation and the thing, what I tried to do this year, I tried to target the students that weren't involved. And I didn't really do a survey, but I tried to get them to come in and sit down and talk to me about would they like to participate in some type of extracurricular activity. And some of them do, some of them don't. I think, you know, a lot of them don't have the background for it. Some of them have to work as a means now. We have about twenty percent of our population that does work, which I understand that in this economy today. But, you know, I want to continue to target those students that are not, that are not involved in extracurricular and try to get that number up as well and do some things in that area where we can try to bolster more positive self-esteem to get those children involved. And I think we can get some of them, you know, if we get five of them, or if we get eight, or we get two, at least we're trying to help those students as well. And I think that's the people we need to target because we know we're gonna get the ones that want to participate. We've had about thirty students interested in starting a wrestling team. Now, where we're gonna put wrestling, who knows? You know, everybody's wanting facilities and when you start looking at trying to buy mats and how much the cost is, where can you store them? With facilities and do this and that, but, you know, we want to give all of those students that opportunity. And we've had an increase in number in dance, we've had an increase in number in cheerleading all the time, but we do have that interest now at wrestling. And Mr. Rowe and I sat down and looked at the criteria for what it is and you just about have to be a genius and a mathematician to figure out how wrestling works with weight classes and trying to figure out their BMIs and you have to do skinfold calipers and all that. And even a couple females were interested in wrestling. But, you know, that's where we're going today. And there are several schools here in our region that do have it and we're gonna sit down and take a look at it this spring and see if it is feasible for us to start wrestling for those students that want to be involved in that. So we may be coming to you all to say we have enough interest to add another sport, you know, which would be good and which would be bad as well. And the good thing about it, it's a winter sport, so facilities are not, well, I shouldn't say facilities are not at a premium at that time with Mr. Jones talking about Little League, but it is. And that's something we've been working on to try to give them more time in our facilities as well. But, you know, hopefully what we can do, we can continue to target our students that are not involved in extracurricular, get those, get those students involved. And I would like to say a big congratulations to the Family Resource Center. We had a food drive this past week. Our goal was five hundred items at the high school. We brought in seventeen hundred and six items that I took to the, well, I didn't take it, I had our maintenance people take it. The back of the school truck was loaded down, boxes on top of boxes, students, what they brought in, it was unbelievable. The outpouring and influx of food and what they brought for our families that needed it. And I'd just like to say thank you to those and to our community and for what we do.
What are we doing to get those? You said we're gonna try to get them involved. What are we gonna do to try to get them involved?
Just try, you know, trying to get them to see if they're interested in sports. A lot of them aren't. You know, there are some of these students that are involved, they would rather go out and skateboard or they'd rather play frisbee or do certain things. And, you know, I would like to see us, you know, it's kind of hard to do an intermural program just because of, we don't have enough space in our facilities. One thing they have started doing in PE classes, they're playing frisbee football. And that gives those children- And, and that gives those children that are involved in those activities, it's giving them something that they can do. They play cross-court in the gym, and that way they can still have other PE activities going on. You know, I don't know what the answer is. Uh, you know, the YMCA only offers programs up to a, a certain age. A lot of those students that's not involved in basketball, maybe I can work with them to see if they have some things. They have open the paintball course up, up there. It's only open at certain times of the year. Uh, a lot of these students are, are, they really like that. Uh, but I think, you know, we're so diverse with what we have as far as trying to get students involved and what they really wanna do. You know, a lot of students, when the skate park went out, now they can't skate park, they can't go from skateboarding to city park, uh, they turned the skate park into a basketball court. And so, what they try to do, you'll see them through town riding on their skateboards and, and doing different things.
What's the status on the, uh, bowling or fishing that's been approved for high schools now?
Bowling, nobody from Corbin this way has bowling. And, uh, fishing wise, I was talking to Mr. Justice up at East Regis, and he said they had some students, then they sent a certified person that was, uh, a lifeguard. And he said he knew what was gonna happen before he sent them. They went to the backwaters and fish trap. He said, lo and behold, they had to have one that had, she had to jump in and pull him out of the water. Uh, we had a couple of students interested last year in having a club. Uh, they were the only two that was really interested in fishing. Unfortunately, one of those students transferred to Shelby Valley. Uh, we still have one that is very interested. He loves to fish. You'll probably see him any day down on the bypass fishing. Uh, he would rather do that probably than come to school. And if we land and fish all day, he would probably stay on the bank down there fishing. But, there's not a lot of schools up this way that, that have the bowling or fishing.
Do you fish in the winter?
No, it's, it's a...
Is that a spring sport?
It's a spring. And, uh...
Well, that's very popular in the colleges now.
Right.
Do you have a boat?
The wrestling, there's...
Mark suggested that we buy a boat.
There are, uh, East Regis has it, Pike Central has it, Johnson Central, Belfry, Prestonsburg has it. Phelps is getting ready to start wrestling, Sheldon Clark has it. So, there are, there are some schools around here locally. You know, fishing, I just have some qualms about taking a student out. There are some guidelines. They have to run the trolling motor. The adult has to run the outboard motor when they are running the outboard motor. Uh, there is liability insurance that's provided when they join the FLW for $25. Uh, the worst part of it is, the state fishing tournament is at, in Paducah. So, you know, that's, that's some concerns about taking a student that far. You know, I wish we could get more schools around here. You know, we've got Great Lakes, great opportunities to get involved in. Um, I was talking to the gentleman from EQT not long ago, and, and at the time, it was back in the summer, and, and they were having an FLW tournament right there on the river in Pittsburgh. And he said, he was standing talking to the president of the FLW. He said, why don't you come up and fish Labor Day weekend? I said, I really don't have time. But, uh, we do have a few students, you know, it may just be one right now. We may even get more on that, on that focus as far as that goes. But, I'm sure with the wrestling part, if we got wrestling started, that we would have a few, you know, out of those 30 that did put their names on, have many are really serious about it. They may just put it on there just to be putting it. But, you know, we're gonna sit down this spring to see if there is some feasibility to it.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't know how this works, and I don't know whether it could work or not, especially if it's a competitive sport. But, I understand they have a really good, uh, wrestling program at Pike Central. Is there any way that our kids who are interested could go there and compete with them? Is that...
The way the KHSI is set up, if you don't offer a sport in your school, your students can't go to another school and do it. And it's, you, you have to be in that school so many hours a day and, and be a part of it. You know, it's just like home now, students can't participate in extracurricular activities if they're not enrolled four hours a day.
Well, speaking of that organization, are our cheerleaders now under that umbrella?
Yes, they are. It's competitive cheer.
Should've been years ago. Boy, that's a sport.
Well, now we have to petition the OCR to try to get it a sport. And, uh, you know, everything that you hear, the OCR does not wanna consider it's even at the college level.
Have they watched those girls? Have mercy.
That's part of the best athletes in the school.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, it scares me. I wish they weren't quite so physical.
Well, they have set a lot of guidelines now that what they can do, the National Federation has stepped in, and KPOS has stepped in, that they, they can't use spring floors. They can only do stunts that are so high. And our cheerleaders did win, both cheerleaders won bids to the Nationals, uh, last Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus.
Thank you all. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Okay, now we'll move down to the instructional supervisor report. Mrs. Tackett or Mr. Belcher, or both?
Mr. Belcher.
Mr. Belcher?
I'm gonna defer him because he has test data to share.
I'll move the mic over so I can scroll through the documents. I might keep Miss Tackett guessing what I want to look at.
It's possibly dangerous, isn't it?
Yeah. We're expecting me to trip, I know. Um, yellow folder that's in front of you that says accountability, if you open that up, um, it should be the first document. Let me pull this up so you can see what we're looking for. There's been a few, um, updates, a few things that's happened since, uh, last board meeting that I wanna make sure that you're aware of, uh, related to accountability, especially for next year. Um, and then we've, like Mr. Rowe mentioned, uh, earlier, we've really spent a lot of time in the data. Um, I guess the segue I'll give to that is, uh, we really had to dig deep to look for things to improve, is the way that we can think of it. But, um, um, we're, we're competitive, so we're, we dug deep. Um, this was put out by State Department recently. Um, and it's a, it's, it's probably a little bit more comfortable model concerning what we had originally conveyed to you about, uh, a normative model where schools are competing only against each other, and that regardless, irregardless of score, they will always be 69% of schools that would be needs improvement. That's true for this year. But, for next year, they have used the percentile ranks from this year to set criterion scores for us to try to meet. So, 70th percentile this year meant that you were a proficient school or district. They've set that score, so 70th percentile for elementary was a 62.5 overall score, for middle school, 58.7, and so on for high school and district. That means that next year, instead of you trying to be in a percentile or ranking, you're trying to actually meet this score. So, what the difference will be now is, is that you could have 100% of your schools, and I guess that's the hope, that would actually be above the score. And so, no longer is it gonna be that 70% of, or 69% of schools or districts will have to be in a needs improvement category. And that's, that's probably good news, uh, for communities across the state that they do have a, a benchmark they can try to reach. Um, so 90th percentile distinguished, um, our high school this year, you can see below that the, the scores that we reached, uh, in the elementary, middle, high, and district. So, for high school, we were at 65.4. You can see that 64.4 is what will be needed, uh, next year to reach that. And then the same thing for middle school, 62.7. Uh, to get to the distinguished level, which the middle school was proficient this year, they're gonna need to be at 64.9, so a slight increase. And then in the elementary, a similar scenario, a little bit closer, they were at 69.5, just a little nudge, and they're in the 90th percentile for distinguished. Now, the only thing that I wanna add to that, that I'll just kinda say quickly, is in addition to trying to meet this score, they always expect that you move forward, which means that we have what's called an annual measurable objective. They want us to increase our score by .5 irregardless of where we were at. So, in order for us to become distinguished again, or to become a, a district of distinction, we've not only gotta improve by .5, but we also have to meet this, this criteria. So, both have to happen for you to be there. So, it's gonna be a little bit, uh, more challenging just simply because of that for next year. Does that make sense? Okay. Uh, so that's quite a bit different than the picture of 69% of schools are always gonna be, uh, needs improvement. So, that was good information. Um, now, this, I think it's the second page in. Um, I'm not gonna talk to this, but I wanted you to have it. This was put out, uh, by Ken Drought, um, in OAA Office Assessment Accountability. Um, and he's kind of our guru of assessment. And so, he is in a one-page document, and that's what's, why I wanted you to have it. It, it's pretty concise, but it kind of explains what I just told you verbally, but in a, a little bit more detail. So, if it's okay with you, I'll just, I'll just bypass that document. You can notice in the middle of the, the page that you're gonna see a similar, uh, table to what you just saw, uh, that we talked about. And then the last part is, I think, the information that, that I think we're almost interested in is, is where are we at in terms of, um, a little more detail with our test accountability? Like Mr. Rowe mentioned, the amount of data that we were given was just unbelievable. Um, and the data was given to us somewhat in raw form, and so then we sat down and did sorts and filters with the spreadsheets to start trying to break this apart. And, and the idea is, is that you try to bring this as close to the individual teacher and classroom as you possibly can. So, in other words, instead of us just simply saying that we were a district of distinction, or we were distinguished and saying, okay, we need to improve by .5 and having no idea really what that means, we tried to look at it more closely and bring it down as close to that teacher as we possibly can, so that then they can start looking at areas, uh, within a grade level, within a department, within a school that they may improve on. So, what you're seeing here is, 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 is the start of that. And this is probably, the first table is, is a broader view in the sense that we're looking at state placements. Now, what I mean by that is, we went and sorted and filtered the spreadsheet so that we could compare our school and district to other schools and district scores. And the reason being is that seems to be the most, uh, fair comparison that we can make and try, try to improve from. So, regardless of what the test was, we can always say, well, did we do better than our neighbor, or did we do better than, than Central Kentucky or Western Kentucky? And so, you're gonna see a district score and a school score. This is our overall score, so we know that we were at, at the elementary level. As a district, we were seventh in the state on the overall score. As a school, we were 50th. I'm bad to want to think I'm in the classroom and wanna ask the question, do you know why it would be more schools in the, you know, by school than by district? Many districts are much larger than ourselves. And so, we just have one elementary school. So, as a district, it's likely we're gonna place higher than when we make the comparison by schools, because some districts who maybe aren't as high as us as a district may have individual schools that still are, are performing really well. And so, you'll, you'll usually see a lower placement on the school side versus the district side. And so, this is the part that's really hard as a real high performer, as our district is. This is what I mean by, by we dug deeper, is, you know, these numbers are not gonna be as good a magnification as we'd like to see. We'd like to see a little more magnification so that we can then start to see the differences that, that exist, and we can try to start to address those areas. So, the overall, you can see that example, middle school, 19th, 30th, 38th, and then high school and so on. And then what you're gonna see here is that those, those five areas that we talked about, the accountability model breaks down into. We won't go back into that, but achievement, gap growth, college pre-gradus, graduation rate, you're gonna see those state placements. Now, what's happened is at the elementary and the high school, once we broke apart the spreadsheets and we got it ready for teachers to look at, they literally sat down in their departments and their grade levels, and they started finding these placements so that they can then go and look at those spreadsheets and actually find which schools was it that were, were higher than us. Because then you also have the ability to say, hey, I know so-and-so that teaches over there. We can go and ask them, what are you doing in, in, in some, a particular grade level or subject area? And so, then I went back through, I took their information, I went by, back through it and verified it, and then that's what you're seeing here. Okay, so then overall, and you stop in any, any place along the way, because this is a lot to look at, and we're just gonna go ahead and give this to you to, uh, to have and to take away.
Now, are we gonna be able to get rankings by each grade level?
That's what, that's what we were able to get to.
Oh, okay.
And so, the KPREP, we know, is our new assessment, uh, test. And so, for third through eighth, they have a KPREP test. And so, for instance, language mechanics is tested in the fourth grade and sixth grade.
Oh, okay.
So, those, that fourth grade teacher that's responsible for language, sorry if I'm picking on whoever that is, it just what's in front of me, but that fourth grade teacher that's in fourth grade language mechanics, they're gonna know their placement right there. And then the idea is, is that they start to look around that. In other words, they're looking for areas around this where, how do I compare to my teacher that teaches beside me? Then how do I compare also to the state? And so, it's a comparison model. It's completely competitive in the sense that it gives them a little bit of an idea of how they're doing compared to others around them. Um, let's see. And then you see the, the fact that mathematics and reading is tested across the grade levels. Um, and so, you see those scores. Um, this goes all the way through all subject areas, and then like I said, third through eighth, the gray boxes are just simply that it's not being tested in those particular grade levels. Okay, if I keep scrolling down, there was actually two portions to this, uh, past year's test. There was the KPREP, but there was also a norm reference portion, which means that this test could actually be compared to other national, uh, results. So, the students could actually look at that and say, well, where were, where was I compared to the nation, not just to the state? So, this was a, a portion that the state added so that we're not just, uh, you know, looking within ourselves, we're also looking outside the state of Kentucky. Um, the norm reference, for the most part, you're gonna see higher placements as a group. Um, that'll be the, uh, the, the general feel there. Like I say, I'm not gonna go into, to too much analysis, but simply give you an idea of what's here. Um, end of course exams for the first time last year. Uh, and then, uh, there's a couple of tests that are still considered KPREP tests at the high school level. The 10th grade on-demand, the plan test, one little portion of the plan test, they take the language mechanic score from. And then the 11th grade on-demand is all considered KPREP. But then end of course is, is quality core with ACT. And so, then again, you can see placements, uh, in the state, and that's compared. Now, when, when I say something like this and you don't see a district or a school, that's by school. There is no district comparison for that table. This up here, though, of course, is district and school. So, this is the first table of, of the first ones that you see just a school comparison. Gap group is, is something that's, uh, important as an educator, but also important in the accountability system. This is again, looking at just, uh, students that follow that gap group, so special education population, uh, friend reduced lunch is, is our kind of big hitters in terms of the numbers. And we're looking at that for areas that are we trying, are we doing a good job at addressing students who struggle? And are there certain subject areas where school, students are so, uh, struggling more than, than others? And, uh, so that was the purpose of, of this table. Growth is something that, I'll be honest, I'm still trying to, um, I'm, I'm still trying to assess in terms of, uh, you know, the jury's still out for me in terms of, is this really, really valuable information? So, I wanna kinda keep this as, as we go along, uh, seeing how this, this pans out over the, over the next, uh, the course of the next year. But, what the idea is here, is like, for instance, you see 10th plan to ACT. 111th compared to some of the other scores around here, you could kind of infer then that possibly we're not growing as much from ace, or from plan to ACT in the high school as maybe we, in math, as we, maybe we are in reading. And it's just, you gotta be careful because growth is actually just a competitive model in the sense that they just take the group of students and look at the ACT and they just rank them, file rank them. So, it is not in your, in our minds, growth is kinda like, what did they make here? What did they make here? Do they grow? That's not how it is. It's just comparing the students to the ones around them. So, I'm not, uh, but we still, this is, this is information that's, that's valuable. It's something that to look at. It's also for the school to kinda raise their eyebrow, well, do we need to be doing a better job of that? Um, the E-PASS, I always remember that as Explore Plan and ACT. The actual acronym does not stand for that, but, but Explore Plan and ACT, uh, we were able to look at each subject area and then each grade level. And we can look across the board... And we can look across the board and see the areas that, that we think we need the most attention. Naturally, like Mr. Rowe mentioned, that's probably the feather in our cap that we like the most, is that students are passing tests such as ACT and doing a good job with that, because our colleges are using, using those for them. And so this is very important information for teachers in the school. Now, the, the plan is this, and the principals kind of waited for me to do this. The plan is, is that the, that the two buildings will come back to you at the earliest December, at the latest January. And they will have looked at this even in more detail, as well as other needs that they have, and give you a report of how they're going to try to address those needs. And so that will be the earliest December, January. And you guys correct me if I didn't convey that correctly. So we are in what I would call probably the latter stages and the beginning stages, with the latter stages of awareness, what are, what are the things that's standing out? And then the beginning stages of how to address that. And it's, it's actually in some areas gone beyond beginning. Somebody says, why are we at mid-year deciding, you know, what's the needs? Well, that was something that was handed down to us by the state. Now, the plans are that that will happen in the summer. Is that right, Mr. Rowe? And so the release of this hopefully will come much earlier, and then the information becomes that much more powerful. You know, as long as this system exists in the form it is, we can continue from year to year to, to create the same kind of data that this is, and then the information even becomes more powerful, because you've got successive years to, to, to show trends or what have you.
Well, we've, it's, we haven't been able to get test scores on the last three or four tests that sits here. So, I mean, that's nothing new.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. The amount of data and the top of that, I was encouraged by. But, but it is a lot to look at. And, but I think in this form, I think that taking it to the teacher level, I, I hope that it can be beneficial to us.
We have given this to our administrators and staff already.
This has been, the staff actually helped. Yeah, the staff actually helped to create this. I just simply verified it. The spreadsheet sorts and filters, I helped with that just simply because they do not have the time to do that. So that was my role to try to help with that. And then they already now have copies of this out there as well. And so like I say, in some areas, we're beyond the beginning, beginning stages of trying to improve. I think that that ends what I have for you, which is quite a bit as it was. Do you have any more questions? Like I say, we'll still be trying to address needs for improvement, but, but my suggestion would be is you also look at this. That's the purpose of it, is, is for all of us to put our eyes on it and, and work together to, to how can we improve.
He's far too modest in his comments about the staff developing this. The data that he received was in, in no way, shape, or form gathered like this. And I know the, the building principals and I and the rest of the staff appreciate his data segregation there and sorting through the data. All the low-lying fruit is gone. The, all the easy, quick fixes are gone as to what we can do to improve student performance. So when, when you're scoring at those levels of when we're a district of distinction, the, those easy solutions aren't really there. We, the thing we've got to remember, those other districts that are the top districts in the state are trying to shave and hone and improve and continually improve, just like we are right now, and searching for everything. And appreciate both Mr. Belcher and Ms. Tackett's efforts with the improvement plan and the principals today trying to work on, okay, what is it? Once we move beyond this awareness stage, what is it that we're going to do differently? That if we're not number one in all these boxes here, what are we going to do to move toward being number one? Is, is the main issue. And regardless, the, the test, one of the, one of the things that'll probably never be pointed out, last year on the plan, I think the high school ranked number three in the state. Well, when you're, when you're ranking number three in the state on the plan and your achievement is ma, or your growth is measured from going from plan to ACT, well, unless you're three or better on the ACT, that, that growth is, is not going to be there. So when, when you see those three pedestals that he was kind of talking about with the assessment system of achievement gap and growth, mom and dad out there are our community members. Instead of looking at, okay, are we closing those achievement gaps? That's probably more information for educators, we're concerned about that. Or if, if we're growing from one year to another, parents want to know about that. But as far as mom and dad considering bringing their child to our school district, they want to look at what's the highest achieving school district in this area? And that's what they're concerned about, are sending their child here. So different areas of the assessment focus on different things. As Mr. Belcher mentioned, college and career readiness. We want all students, whether they plan to attend or not, for it to be their option to say, you know, college is or isn't for me. We don't want the colleges and universities saying that to the student.
And I'll quickly add, not add to that, but support that. That in addition to, when you, when you look at these numbers, like for instance, 45th, you know, you say, oh, I don't like 45, that's a great big number. Well, you know, remember with the elementary schools, there's 733 approximately. Okay, and then when you're looking at middle school numbers, there's 333, as well as high school's 230. So there's also that kind of level of how you look at this as well. But you can get caught up and you say, well, okay, this is probably how we do. But it, the numbers reflect the educational opportunities that we're offering students. And it's because of that that I think I can really buy into this. And, and, and I think our teachers can too, that we're trying to improve, because it is about the opportunities they're seeing.
In other words, it's going to be more difficult for us to raise these than it would be if we were way down the block.
That's right. Those, for example, this will probably say it best. For those school districts below the 70th percentile, if they increase one point, they're going to be labeled as progressing. That's, that's pretty generous there.
If we stay the same, we're not progressive.
We're no longer a school of distinction, district, so that's, that's right. The, the treadmill is spinning pretty rapidly right now for us. And we've got to keep up a tremendous pace just to, to stay at that level. That's right.
I guess when we're tired, we look at things like this and we kind of get, you know, oh, it's going to get harder. But then there's that part of me that says, ooh, a good challenge.
Well, we sincerely hope that the students feel that way.
That's the thing, and that's why I say that. You know, the day in and day out, you kind of lose sight of that. But it is, it's a good challenge. It's a good place to be.
The other thing that nobody out there will ever know, or they will now that I'm sharing this, two students were in here before the board meeting, and our instructional supervisor was taking time to tutor them. And I didn't say anything about guys. He's, he's got to prep for a presentation for a board meeting. Two students in are coming, and those little things I appreciate that you do. Because that's, that's what we're here for, is to help them. Otherwise, this doesn't really matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. Is that it?
Yep.
Ms. Tackett, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
I think that's plenty to sort. I, I do want to mention though, that he was talking about putting together the spreadsheets. He also created guiding questions for the teachers to lead them through what to look for on the spreadsheets. And that was no small task either. So he has really put a lot of, lot of work into this.
And I can say, you know, when I took all this out, I was, okay, are they going to throw things at me? That was not what I, I got. Definitely not. They, our teachers are just as genuinely interested in all of this as, as we are. And, and I don't think that you would necessarily get that reception anywhere.
No, you gave them an, an amount of time to get started, and like a week to finish it. And we had some groups of teachers who stayed and finished it before they would leave, because they wanted to see the end results, so. Really high-level perspective.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to the action consent items, A through K. If there's any items to be brought before the board, we'll move it down to the action discussion. If not, I'll have a motion to approve all the action consent items as presented. Let those over. Do you have a motion?
No motion.
Mr. Beeter, a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cardy, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed, say no. So moved. Okay, we'll move down to item four, action discussion items, annual nutritional analysis report. Mrs. Carolyn Smith, our food services director, right? Ms. Smith? Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate all girls' support and, I'm not used to this.
All right.
So many changes that we went through this year. And it seemed like I've had my head buried in my desk and on my computer and trying to pull all this analysis out. But all at the same time, I want to get back out to where the kids are at every now and then, and see that that's what the kids are for. But as far as the changes go, as y'all probably mostly hear, that the biggest changes are, we used to could give them, as long as we met the minimum requirements, we could give them all they wanted, as long as we kept it within reason and cost-wise. So federal guidelines has placed a minimum and maximum on this. So the minimum and maximum is different for K through five, six through eight, nine through 12. So that cuts our portions of grains, protein, saturated fats, calories, through all those grade levels has to be different. And so the biggest challenge, I guess, is separating those grade groups, especially my seventh and eighth and nine through 12. So far, I went Thursday to my last training to learn how to plug all those in. The state purchased a new program called N-Team that we can use. And we plug every item in. I'll give you all a copy of this later, but this is just one day for K through five. So I had to do this for each grade level and each day for a week, submit that to them. And that's how I get my six cents per student. If y'all have heard about the six cents rule, that's how I get that six cents, is when I get all that plugged in for a week for each grade level. And it comes back to me approved. Then I send it back to state, and then I get the six cents approval. After I do that, then I'm certified to get that six cents certification that each menu item that I do, each month I do, then I had to keep using this program to plug it in, because when they come to check us out, when they come to make sure that we are meeting the criteria, then, then I have to say, you know, we are still going by the same program, no matter what items we use. It's, it's a little bit confusing. The kids had a hard time understanding why they couldn't have spaghetti and garlic bread. So we, we kind of backed off on some of the items until we learned more about it. Some of my staff members, I think when I took it to them, they got a little overzealous and they didn't want to give them enough of something. So we're working on giving them back a little bit more. Working on giving them whole grains. And like I said, nine through 12 can get more than the elementaries are working on their portion levels and our recipes. So, so far, we've come into compliance. And I was working on that today. Didn't have any trouble meeting the calories. So it's not, it's going to be quite as challenging as I thought it was. As long as we keep giving them the vegetables and the fruits, then we're going to be okay on that. I would like to say, on the grade school level, we're giving them a canned fruit and at least two fresh fruits daily. At the high school level, we're giving them probably at least two canned fruits and two to three fresh fruits daily. We still have the major order salads that they can come and, we have a little sheet. They check mark what they want. The only thing we have to watch on that is meats and cheeses. They can have all the vegetables they want on it. So that's still a pretty good item if they don't like what's on the menu. We can still let them come back and get seconds of fruits and vegetables without cost. I can't say we can let them have all they want, but we try to make sure that no kid ever leaves there hungry. If they are hungry, then surely they can have apples, oranges, milk, vegetables, anything to fill that child up. And that's our biggest goal, is filling that child up. We had the submarine salad bar, sandwich bar, I guess we call it. We call it build your own sandwich bar. If y'all haven't been there, we're going to have it again in December. If you're welcome to come and try it out at the high school. We, we have three selections of bread. We have three to four selections of meat, a couple selections of cheeses. And then we set everything out on a bar for the students to choose from, from romaine lettuce to iceberg lettuce to peppers, cucumbers, tomatoes, olives, just practically anything the kids could ask for to build that sandwich up. And it was a big, it was a big hit. The teachers and students alike, they really liked that. At the elementary level, it's a little bit harder to give them that many choices. We have come up with the item that they're really liking. It's called Sidekicks. It's 100% juice, but it's frozen. And it kind of comes like slushy after a few minutes, and they're really enjoying that. So we're allowed to give them 100% juice occasionally through lunch, so they're really enjoying that. I just really appreciate all the support, more than, I've heard more support than I have bad comments. So that's a good thing. Because when they come at me during the summer and say, we've got to do this, we've got to do this, that it was just a really overwhelming that we had to make that big of a change that fast. And I've had a lot of questions about it, have a lot of comments about it. But for the most part, it's been positive, and we are working towards giving them more choices. I'd like to thank Mr. Green also for the lunch. You're welcome to do that every year. Wish I could give the children steak dinners, but, but we can't do that. So it is a really, really good treat for them. Thanksgiving lunches.
Is that on our nutritional thing, that steak?
That would be good.
No carbs.
Ms. Smith, if you don't mind, could you touch on a couple of things I were doing differently? This year's, one thing is catering for the sports teams. And I know our food service department's trying to fill a niche or a need whenever our, our sports teams travel, so that instead of trying to make arrangements for restaurants and things, I know you and your ladies are, are working, try to fill that need. You may want to touch on that a little bit. And then also, had several positive comments from parents regarding the snacks after school, because where times change and it's getting dark much earlier, that the, the students are not having to get in their cars, leave and come back before practice or before an away game, that you're offering those. And could you touch on the participation rate as far as offering snacks after school?
Yes, that's been a really great program. It's not a federally reimbursable program. It's just something that we offer to the students after school. They really enjoy being able to come in and get their drinks and their food, and like Mr. Green said, not having to leave the school. And we try to give them what they want, a hot item, a snack item and drinks. And we let them use their lunch account. We started doing that last year, so that's really worked out well, because a lot of them don't carry pocket change around. So we started letting them use their lunch account for that. If there's any after-school programs, I think I sent emails out to Mr. Garrison, several others, that if we have groups, then they can let us know ahead of time, and we can do what they request, if they want pizza sandwiches, whatever items if they request, then we can know the bulk about what to fix. As far as the athletic programs, we, Ms. McNulty's had us do several after-school meals, just the complete meal before they go on the road trip. So they've had the chicken and potatoes and rolls and... And, um, I think that has been a big hit, that, um, the ball players has got that meal, that hot meal. And they didn't have to go on the road and stop and pay a, I'm sure, a bigger price for it. So, hopefully, that has been a benefit to the lunchroom program and for the, uh, for the athletic program. As far as, um, to-go lunches, we try to reach out to all our, uh, programs that are going on trips that, um, we can do bag lunches or try to work around the lunch schedule to offer our kids, um, the meal that they deserve. And then, um, any free and reduced kid, that we can count those kids and they don't have to pay the price to go to Gaddy's or Burger King or wherever it's going, that they can take that big lunch and it counts for their lunch. They don't have to pay the price. And there's some kids that can't afford to pay that price as often. Is there any questions?
Just want to thank you for doing that and also even concessions. I know you guys have made hot dog sauce and hot dogs and those kinds of things too in the past with the sports teams. I want to say thank you because I think it's working out good both ways.
I have a really good staff. We have, um, they're one-on-one with our coaches and our teachers that they can come to them and, uh, our managers and tell them that they need something and they're, they're pretty well on top of it. Like, even if we're not preparing it, then we try to order that item and have it on hand for them. So, that makes it a lot easier to, for them to get a hold of when they need it, probably price-wise also. Both my schools got a hundred on the health department again this past...
Ms. Smith, do you have the same... Do the feds insist that you have the same standards at noon for the boys and the girls? I mean, as a mother, I know that my son ate a heck of a lot more than my girls did.
Yes, they did.
So, can the boys have more at noon?
Like I said, they, the way they, um, no, I understand what you're saying, especially if they play ball and they're active and they always eat more.
Yes.
They do. But, uh, as far as federal standards, they go by age group and not gender.
Oh, that's ridiculous if you don't mind my saying so. This is not the first thing that the federal government, I think, is ridiculous.
But you're, you're saying you have to follow the federal guidelines about what you do. But you would, you do have leeway in preparing the menu. Are you the one that comes up with what you're fixing for them or how you fix it as long as you follow those?
As long as I follow those guidelines, yes.
So, how you prepare it and, and that sort of thing, that's you?
Yes.
But, but when you say that, the, for example, the deep fryers are gone from the high school. We, we don't have the deep fryers. It's, it's...
But is that part of the federal, is that...
It's, it's part of the federal in the, in the account that if I take that chicken patty and deep fry, then it's gonna go above my fat level that I'm required. The same thing is they don't tell me, you can't use butter in this, in this and that product. At the same time, every item that I put into that, um, particular food has to be made into a recipe, has to be counted as calorie, fat, sodium. So, that makes my count go over. So, in one way, I have the leeway to make the menus, to make the recipes, to make the items. Another way of looking at it is you do it the way you're told. In other words, everything that I put into that recipe, it goes towards my calorie count, my fat count, my sodium count. And if I go above, then, um, we're not meeting the federal guidelines.
Does Mr. Belcher have to help you with your...
He may, he may have to.
But that is a concern for the boys.
Oh, it is.
It, it is. It's, it's, um...
Which, I mean, I understand you're in a tough place, but they do eat more.
They do eat more. And it was brought up, um, several times, um, to, uh, when we went to Frankfurt, her meetings, it was brought up. And especially, like I said, athletes, they, they're always hungry. And, uh, they do need more food. And the only thing we were told is, um, the after-school programs to kind of compensate and, um, to let them have more fruit, vegetables, um, and milk. The, can't remember, I think it's seven hundred to seven hundred fifty calories. We had to stay in that guideline for nine through twelve. That's, in one way, that's a pretty good amount of calories. And they have choices as they come through the line. So, most of your girls, non-athletic, um, may not choose all those items. But, uh, their way of looking at it is if they're hungry, if they need that, then they're gonna choose every one of those items.
But you know, if you have a seventh grader or an eighth grader that weighs a hundred and forty pounds and then you've got a senior in high school that weighs two hundred or two hundred and twenty, there's a different demand there. I mean, I know this is, this sounds almost as hard to me as, as what we're doing. It's...
Exactly. It, it is hard. And it is hard to get across to my staff. And another thing we took, um, to Frankfurt, the question, you may have a sixth grader as big as a ninth grader, tenth, eleventh grader. You may even have one or two that is, uh, a little older. But the way the federal guideline is handed down to was by level, school, grade level.
I don't think any of those people had children.
They may be buying each other's lunch. We don't know what they're...
So, that is our only option is just to, um, you know, like, like I said, you're welcome to look at this. Every single item that we have, if it's down to steamed corn, if you put butter in that corn, any amount of butter in that corn, it has to go to a recipe. It plugs in your calories. Also, this year, we had to start saving our labels from every single item. So, that we can scan them on our computer and have proof when we are audited that, yeah, this is the item that you're using. And it has to match our invoices. So, it's been tough. It's been very time-consuming.
I didn't realize how difficult your job was. Thank, I thank you for this report because it certainly has increased my knowledge. I don't know about everybody else, but...
Well, you're welcome.
I appreciate you more.
Ms. Smith, we're having a healthier school population. What are we doing to talk to our families, our parents, how are we educating them when they're not at school? When the kids are not at school to have a healthier lifestyle?
Uh, we did have a handout, um, at the beginning of school year when we had, um, the open house. We had handouts set above schools. And, um, we have, um, occasionally on the back of our menus, we have a healthy plan. But, uh, you're exactly right. I think it begins at home. We, um, the lifestyle that they have at home carries over to the school.
And, and I appreciate you being at both open houses, not only with that, but with samples, food samples and things. I know that several of the schools have had the lentils and the sweet potato fries. Some students like them, some, uh, do not. And it's kind of hard for, um, me to wrap my mind around that, uh, according to those guidelines, that the tray of a kindergarten is supposed to be identical to the tray of a sixth grader over there. According to those guidelines. So, that, that's, that's kind of difficult for, uh, any of us to comprehend. But the thing, I do want to say congratulations to you and your staff. Both schools, as you mentioned earlier, received a one hundred percent health rating by the health department. I, as, as I say to staff and students, I would challenge anyone, uh, next time you go to a restaurant, see if they got a one hundred rating this past month. So, uh, and, and both of our, uh, cafeterias did. So, want to say congratulations to you.
I do have a wonderful staff. Thank you, Ms. Cardy. I, I don't know sometimes if I have, know how to get it across, um, to, uh, parents, um, teachers and staff sometimes of how, uh, difficult it is to just come up with those guidelines. But at the same time, we want the kids to enjoy their lunch. So, that, it is a challenge. And, and I've always said, anybody has any suggestions, gladly, we'll try whatever we can do. And actually, the sandwich bar was a student suggestion. So, and, uh, so that came across really well.
We have extremely bright students. They're gonna have good suggestions. It's practical for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I have some coffee.
We now will move down to item, energy management status report. Mr. Johnson, our director of pupil personnel, football coach and...
Many hats.
Many hats.
Necessary.
You're so good, we'll let you have a hundred and fifty calories for lunch. Seven hundred and fifty calories.
I usually use that as a preview. She has an extremely tough job. Question you asked about communication to, to faculty, uh, community. We were in partnership with the Pike County Health Department on Fit Pike County. We participate in that. Family resource sends some information home in blocks, uh, on some of their newsletters. Part of the activities that the elementary uses came from that, uh, Fit Pike County. We've got some information and, and some, uh, some material from those. So, we try to collaborate along on that information and get those out. And then what she just went over in the principles, we'll bring, again, the summary of that to you next month to approve or take any public, uh, input. And then that will be posted out on our website, exactly what she's gone over on the, that, uh, I think that was one thing, she's cutting things extremely close. She's allowed ten percent total fat and I think they were at nine point seven percent, you know, they were using. It was actual, not much room there left to negotiate. They're held such, uh, they're held such tight restrictions. But all that'll be posted to try to get that information out to the public and, uh, and, uh, to make those, to fix those changes as best we can.
So, we all should be losing weight.
Yeah, that would be, that's the goal. Unfortunately, it's not working on my end too well. Yeah, that's the goal, I think, of the, the programs there.
But we, we really, we need to be supportive of this. And if you don't believe it, go down to Walmart.
Well...
I mean, there's lots of...
I get you something with the Fit Pike County, uh, organization. They can bring us, uh, they give you some pretty sobering statistics on, uh, not only in Pike County, but Kentucky in general on diabetes rates and, uh, obesity, things of that nature. It's, it's a pretty weight, pretty good wake-up call.
Scary.
Yeah, it is scary.
It is scary.
You really realize it until you start seeing those. But she has an extremely tough job. And then the last thing, compliment her on, uh, I don't know if you knew, when the electricity went out at our, our high school a few weeks ago there and, uh, that was a little bit somewhat chaotic. Mr. Rowe did an excellent job keeping classes rolling. But what was noticed was lunch hardly missed a beat. There was just like a maybe ten or fifteen minute adjustment. She coordinated getting school from, uh, food from the elementary to the high school and the service line not miss a beat. And, uh, and that's what it was so fantastic about is hardly was noticed. So, she, uh, she does outstanding job and her staff does also. So, she's really to be complimenting. I'll go over quickly with you, uh, try to give you two updates throughout the year on, uh, our energy consumption. Again, um, thing to remember, this is our second largest expenditure out of title, our fund one money. This is, uh, our second largest expenditure. And we try each year to coordinate, uh, activities with the school. Record this data, reports get sent on to the state, uh, on, uh, on the conservation efforts and things that we do. This is really awkward. I think, I'm, I'm, I want to sit down and hold here. I just can't do it. But, uh, the, uh, those things are all, uh, implemented into our district, uh, energy conservation plan. I try, I tried to just give you a cross-section. The first page deals with the district itself. And compared to last year, uh, we're, we're still doing, we've had a reduction in costs of nine percent for the first, first quarter, uh, nine thou- over, a little over nine thousand dollars compared to, compared to last year. So, we're keeping that trend. Now, these are actual costs. I always try to deal in actual costs. I'm a big believer in that. They try always give you deferred costs. But in bottom line, deferred cost means you're writing a check, you're still writing that check larger than what it was. So, these are actual costs. You wrote a check for nine thousand dollars less than what we did last year at this time for our, our electric usage. If you look on the second page, we have to include this. So, we, as they can tell you, we hold ourselves as accountable. As we do the schools, we had a five percent reduction, uh, with the first, uh, first, uh, quarter there for the central office here. We, they do an excellent job on turning their lights out and, uh, delighting and, and things of that nature to, uh, to conserve our costs as much as possible. The high school auditorium, it's on the third page. That is the, that's the, the monster that drives there. It's our largest, uh, consumer of energy. And, uh, compliment Mr. Rowe and, and Mr. Coleman, uh, we had twelve percent reduction from, uh, from last year. So, again, they're keeping that decline also, uh, there. So, this is all, you know, feeds into our district, nine percent savings in the high school. And elementary is the last page. Now, our elementary, uh, it says P S kitchen, but that, that includes commons area, office and lower level on the last spreadsheet there. It, uh, had an eleven percent decrease in what, over the first, uh, quarter. And we hope to attribute a lot of that, uh, big capital expenditure this year. Approximately seventeen thousand, uh, excuse me, nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for new fixtures, T-eight bulbs, uh, have a C R I rating of like seventy-eight, which is in a very ranked, according to ninety and above is excellent. And, uh, the C R, very good is from seventy to, to ninety, so the color, uh, uh, rating there. So, that was all replaced in the elementary, I think, total number of fixtures, something like a hundred and twenty-five, about fifty, seventy-five left. And we'll have them pretty well caught up. Hopefully, by the end of the, the year, we'll have a hundred percent, uh, completion rate on our fixtures, lighting fixtures both the elementary and, uh, the high school. That's our goal. But all that's factoring into, uh, to more energy efficiency, uh, for our district.
Excuse me, what do we use that little dab of natural gas for?
Well, that little dab turns into big dab, but, you know, yeah, it gets pretty big. But, uh, kitchen uses, there's a, a part of the kitchen uses, uh, some, uh, natural gas for heating. Blue Goose has natural gas, also has heat there. And then, uh, a bus garage uses some also. There's two, uh, that come into the back of the kitchen, two separate meters. And we use, that's where it feeds into our building and our kitchen area, uh, we use it, use it there. Blue Goose, sometimes we have to monitor it tightly. A lot of the public sometimes use that or some other teams and they'll leave, leave the thermostat and things up. We're looking at getting some, maybe some time control, uh, thermostats on that to help prevent it. And I don't think they do it intentionally. You're just, you're in a hurry, you're tired, you practice all night. You just walk out, you forget it. You forget it. It's not coming directly at your pod. You just tend to forget those things. So, we watch that there. They've done, you can't compliment enough on the, the job they've done and, uh, uh, you know, and, and making that, start to make that a mindset with the students and staff. And it is such a big expenditure and it has no, there's nowhere in the future it looks, or appears to be going to go down. So, it's gonna continue to eat into our budget and we have to monitor that as closely as we can. Where I look at it, if I can do that, that's gonna allow you to do all this other things ahead of me there to keep that money. So, we'll try to monitor that as closely as we can. Have to throw in a, uh, a word for Kelly Scott. I mean, she is an ace in the hole. She is tremendous on the things she do. She does, part of the, the program, uh, with energy conservation, we also include recycling, things of that nature. I think she's worked with both the city and the county. Got a recycling, uh, being there behind the school now. Then there's one in the parking lot, the other side of the football field. We went from two bags here, I think we've got about eight bags now that we use for recycling plastics, cardboard and paper things. She does a tremendous, uh, tremendous work for the, for the district. They participated in the, uh, two thousand and twelve recycle bowl. It just finished up. They'll know the results, uh, next week. But, uh, she, she, uh, and her, uh, club recycled over fifteen hundred pounds of plastic bottles, paper and card, uh, cardboard. So, uh, it ended on the ninth and she'll know the results. She's won that the next several years in a row and she does a tremendous job and very active participant in our, our, uh, organization on energy conservation.
I wonder how many, I wonder how many of the students have gone into their homes and encouraged their, their parents.
I think they have, yeah, quite a large, a large amount, especially with, her club is huge. It's, uh, the members she has and they, uh, she is, her energy transfers to those kids. I mean, they, they're out there with gloves and, and things ticking up.
That opened up now for the first time this year. It's actually beyond a school club now, it's a community club. Community members taking part in it.
Her energy has definitely trickled, trickled on, uh, to other, uh, throughout the community and to the students, which is a great, a great thing. I mean, it's their future really, it's affecting. Regardless of what energy types we use, uh, we want to conserve as much of that for the future and they do an outstanding job.
I still don't have any place to put my ten cans.
That, that is it. Uh, as far as, yeah, I try to make it brief as I can. As far as, yeah, try to make it brief as I can. The good thing is, like I said, we're keeping those costs, we're steadily keeping those costs under control and still on a decrease on all those. We'll fix, try to get those fixtures, goal is to have those by the end of the year. All of our lighting, which are T eights, smaller number, more efficient. I've learned a tremendous amount doing this over the last two years. But hopefully, we'll have those taken care of. Appreciate your support. Thanks.
Just two things on that. One, I want to thank Mr. Coleman and his staff. I mean, from the last day of this semester, we'll be trying to make sure that if no one's in there, they're finished up for the Christmas play, that the auditorium is, the thermostat is set much lower, the same way with the dinatorium at the elementary school. I can promise you the last day of school, that's one of the first things we're trying to make sure of, especially for the heat for the summer. And wherever the custodial maintenance staff aren't working, that we've got the air conditioning or the heating that's turned down so that we're saving that. The other thing I'd like to point out is in most other districts, they pay someone or a portion of their salary to handle these things. And I appreciate Mr. Johnson, he accepted this as another assignment of duty and I apologize for that. But we thank you for the savings there and the things that you do. And I appreciate your efforts on this. As he mentioned, most people are unaware, second largest cost behind payroll is electricity. So, that's why it's so important for us to try to save. Every dollar we can save on this is another dollar we can spend on students.
This costs more than the diesel fuel for our buses?
Oh, without question. Without question.
Okay. Does that surprise you? I know what my power.
Can we move down to other business? Any other business brought before the board, Mr. Green? Can we move down to information review items, personnel report?
Two, I believe, individuals on personnel report. Field position at the high school with instructional assistant for the library. And then also substitute instructional assistant to add to the list. That's the only two on the personnel report.
Okay, thank you. Had Miss Lanius, we had the two letters that were already written and read to us. Need to be adjourned for a closed session?
No.
Nothing to be brought for the board? All right, we'll move down to adjournment and I'll recommend a motion to adjourn if there's no other business to be brought before the board. Y'all want to stay, I guess? Mr. Tackett makes a motion, a second.
A second?
Ms. Combs makes a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose? Be adjourned. Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.